I bless you, my brothers and my sisters. Christ Jesus, our risen Savior, and so that we thank Him and we praise Him for another day, another week, that He smiled on us, another week that He's just been good, He's just that good to us. And so that we thank Him and we give Him all the glory. And if you got in a good sense, you'll tell Him, "Thank you." Uh, certainly, we're grateful for each one of you. Our New Hopeians and certainly our friends and family that shares with us. Uh, they doing this hour and certainly we encourage you, take a moment and uh inbox, uh, call or text a family member, a friend, and let them know that the New Hope, uh, number one Baptist church, uh, midweek service is on. And certainly, it will do your good, not only on today, but in the days to come. Certainly, I wanna, uh, know we getting ready for Christmas and certainly this season of ad- advent as we, uh, take a moment to just thank God for His gift and to man and certainly and His Son Jesus. So, so we, uh, thankful for you and certainly we praying for you. And certainly, we just praying hope for, hoping that you will have a blessed Christmas this coming up weekend. Uh, certainly, let us pray. Bless God, our Father, we come today just as we are. Come, oh God, asking that I will look on us again with our pity, our compassion, our mercy of God, we find ourselves, asking that you just continue not only to look beyond our fault, but thank you for looking at our faults, or continue to strengthen us where we're weak, continue to build us up where we're spiritually torn, and continue to give us a spirit of umbrage. Oh God, we, we know that all that we have is of thine. And then God, we, we are just still thank you for choosing us, thank you for seeing something and else that we did not see in ourselves. God, we praying for mankind everywhere, we praying that God, for those who are less fortunate than we are, those who going through sickness, the season of sickness, season of bereavement, and season of misfortune, a season of loneliness, God, whatever the seasons that they going through, God, we knowing and we just trusting that we're not in this by ourselves, you are with us. Thank you for being our ever-present help. Oh God, thank you for sending out the friend, our friend, the Holy Spirit, not only who shall comfort, lead, but God, we just thank you for Him walking beside us. Oh God, and we pray now that that would just come in our midst and the person of Holy Spirit touch our spiritual ears, that we can be able to hear our eyes as we can see our hearts, that we can accept what you would have to say to us on this day. We ask now that you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable. And I said, "Oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer," and all the children, oh God, said, "Amen." All right, let's get right into our discussion and study on tonight as we started on last week, dealing with in the book of Isaiah, chapter sixty-one, verse one and two, five things. Five things that Christ, uh, came to do. We dealt with that on last week. The first point was to preach the good news to the poor. And so we want to look at the second thing that Christ came to do. And if you have your Bibles, that's sixty, first chapter of Isaiah, and verse one and two. And, uh, we find it, it says that, um, that He came to what? He came to, uh, not only preach good tidings and good news to the poor, but then He says in that, um, uh, first verse, and he has sent me to heal the broken, the broken heart. All right, he, so that we gonna deal with that, uh, the broken heart, to heal broken hearts. Let me give us some scriptures that we can, we could be able to meditate and read, uh, in on, on the upcoming days, okay? I know this busy time of the year, but still wanna take time out and let God talk to us. And He talks to us through His words, so wanna find a time out, uh, to, 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 to read and to study, even though we busy with family and friends with this time of the year, but still we wanna make sure we have time with the Lord. So Isaiah, chapter fifty-three, verse four, I want you to meditate on that, read that. That's Isaiah, chapter fifty-three, verse four. Uh, Matthew, chapter eight, verse seventeen, I want us to meditate on that. I want us to meditate on First Kings. First Kings, chapter nineteen, verse one through eight. Talking about Elijah, I want you to study, read that passage of scripture there. And, um, and Matthew, chapter five, uh, verse number four. It'll do your good, uh, in the days to come, okay? All right, so we're dealing with, uh, Jesus came to, uh, heal the broken heart, the broken-hearted, okay? All right, so, um, I want, I want to begin by, uh, by, 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 by reminding us, uh, about, um, if you've never been there, keep, keep on living, it's just so much, uh, that, 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 we find ourselves going through as people, as peoples in general, that is dealing with brokenness, that, 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 that is dealing with broken heart. Not, not only was it, uh, something that, um, people, uh, Judah during the, uh, the time that Isaiah was writing this, that was dealing with brokenness, they was, they, they was going through a period of crushness. Um, they, they was, they was hurting. Uh, if you, if you read, uh, yeah, about, about them at this time, especially, uh, go to that fifty-third, uh, chapter of Isaiah, it tells us about, uh, um, how Jesus was gonna come, surely He was, was going to bore, He was born our greed. And, and, and when you, and when you, when you, when you go back and study Israel, Judah, um, state of being is that they were, they, they was definitely, uh, hurting. They, they was, they, they was, they was, they was going through, um, they was, um, Zion, uh, you understand that, 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 the oppression that they was had received during the time, especially down in Babylon? Uh, let, let your mind go back, is that they was in a, that they was going through, uh, brokenness, grief. They, they, they was, they was in a, a state of brokenness. And, and, and the Lord, the Lord had to, had to speak to them, He had to encourage them. And, and thank God that God, uh, cares for the brokenness. And, and, uh, you, you don't, you don't, you don't have to look far, you don't have to look deep, but sometimes you can just look in the mirror and see the person, uh, that is going through some brokenness. Sometimes the person that needs to be encouraged is the person sitting in the seat that you are sitting in. And, and, and that usually, uh, be you, dealing with greed, uh, brokenness, dealing with, uh, devastation over divorce, and, and sometimes just, uh, uh, being overwhelmed with, um, financial burdens and, uh, just dealing with life in general, uh, can, can, uh, can crush us, can, uh, loneliness can consume us. And just dealing with the plagues and, uh, what we've been dealing with the last two or three years, the pandemic, the COVID, that all these different types of diseases. We dealing with the flu and, uh, all, you know, just all kinds of, of, uh, sickness. And in order that is a result of sin. And, and so, so, so brokenness ha- has, 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 especially a broken heart, uh, has enslaved so many in this world. And so, um, all kinds, just, just think about it. I don't wanna go into all of the, uh, the details of what may cause the, uh, broken heart, but it all go, boils down to sin. And, and, and if it's not, uh, internal pain, is external? Is, is that, is that, is that, many of us know something about broken heart. And so, so, so the Lord had Isaiah to, and, uh, he's, you know, he's known as the eager prophet. He was able to look seven hundred down, down, uh, to, uh, to the telescope of time. And, and the Lord had him to, 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 to write, to encourage that this, uh, son of his, this Messiah is gonna come to what? To, to bind up, to bind up the hearts and to heal, uh, the brokenness infirmities. And so, once Jesus came into the world, is that we know that He began to what? He began to heal, uh, broken heart. That, that was part of His ministry of, uh, and, and, and that, that's still, uh, that, that's the good, no, he, that's still good news today. It, it is that, is that, is that He still restores, He still in the restoration business. There's nothing that you and I, uh, can, can face or go through that the Lord cannot what? He cannot restore, He cannot heal us. And so, 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 so Christ came to heal. He came to heal brokenness. He came to, when you read that, the fifty-third chapter of Isaiah, verse four, is that He, He came to care of our sorrow. Okay? And, 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 and Isaiah says is that, "Yet we, yet we didn't esteem His strickenness, smitten of God, and He was afflicted." We, we don't, we don't know the, uh, the, the gravity, or we don't know the, the extent of the pain, of the, uh, affliction that Christ, uh, endured on our behalf. We, we, we have a little glimpse of what, uh, how He bore our grief, how He bore our sin. Uh, but no one, no one really knows, uh, even, 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 even God the Father don't. Cause, uh, when, 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 when it got so severe for Christ, is that it got dark. God, God, God the Father caused darkness, uh, to appear, are you listening to me? Uh, to appear, uh, uh, across the land. It got so dark, uh, that, um, that, that God Himself did not want to see, uh, the severity of His Son's suffering. And so, and so, but Christ, uh, uh, said that, um, that, 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 that according to when He spoke, uh, in the, in that, uh, eighth chapter of Saint Matthew, verse seventeen, is, is that Christ Himself said He came, that, that, that He might what? He might fulfill which was spoken by the prophet Isaiah. He took on our infirmity. Yeah, he, 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 read it when you get a chance, if you don't believe me. He, he, he said it in Matthew, Saint Matthew, eight and seventeen, is that He came to bear our sickness. He came to do that. And thanks be to God that, that He came on our behalf to, to what? To bear our sickness, to bear our infirmity. And so, and so, 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 so when you look at, um, what Christ really came to do, it is that, is that, uh, it became an opportunity, uh, uh, for God to do something in our lives that will what? That will cause us to have a closer relationship with Him. Oh yeah, oh yeah. Uh, 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 don't, 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 um, uh, uh, curse, uh, don't get angry, uh, when you going through your season of, it, it's that that's an opportunity for God to teach us lessons, some ve- some valuable lessons that, 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 that will help us not only today, but in the days to come. Is that that's an opportunity for us, uh, to get closer to the Lord, for our faith to strengthen. Yeah, 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 cause, 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 cause I believe that's what Paul had in mind when he taught, when he wrote and, and, and preached to, uh, the church in Rome in that eighth chapter of Romans, verse number twenty-eight. He said, "All things, all things may not be good to you, but it's good for you." He said, "All things work together." Good of them that what? Love the Lord and are, and are called according to His purpose. Right, that, is that all things work together for the good of them that love God and who are called according to His purpose. So, so there's, there's a purpose for us when we go through what we go through. That, 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 there's a purpose, there's a purpose. Is, is that that purpose is for us to not only our faith, huh? To become stronger, but also our relationship with the Lord. Is that we ought to get closer to the Lord. That sometimes, sometime, sometime, we don't understand that the Lord has blessings in disguise. And one of those blessings that He has in, in disguise is when we go through brokenness. Okay? And, but we got to learn to what? We got to learn how to trust God even in our trials. And, 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 and if you just allow me to just add on to that, is, is that, is that, is that even in those, in those critical, in those, uh, crucial times that we are going through our trials, is, is that, is that, is that, that's, that's especially when the Lord is trying to teach us to what? Rely, to trust Him more, huh? Not, not, not on, not on our own merit, but on what? On Him. So, 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 so when we going through our seasons of brokenness, when we going, when our spirit has been crushed, is that that is an opportunity for us to what? Trust in the one who's, who's already in control of our lives. Oh yeah, he, he's the one that is in control of our lives. And thank God, thanks be to God, let me say that, thanks be to God, that when we going through our season of brokenness, our season of depression, our season of sickness, huh? Is that that's an opportunity for us to rely and to trust more in God. Because our faith in Him ought to be what? Much stronger. So, 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 so I want you, I want us to be encouraged, I want us to be encouraged, I want us to be encouraged, not only today, but in the days to come. Is, is that, is that, is that we don't, we, we don't have to, we, we don't have to carry the load, the heavy load by ourselves. Is that when, when, when God came in the person of His Son Jesus, is that, is that He came to, to help us, to teach us that we more than conquerors. Oh, thanks be to God. He the one that oversees. He's the one that is, that is in control of every aspects of our lives. Even when we don't understand, that's good teaching right there. Even when we don't understand what God is up to. Is that we are not in this thing by ourselves. That's, that, that's the encouragement, that's, that, that's the shouting part of it. That's, that's why I get happy. Knowing that I'm not in this by myself. So thank God for the brokenness. Thank, thank God for, uh, the season of, of, of frustrations. Even, even, even when we have season of fear, oh yeah. When calamities arise, when we lose a loved one by death, huh? When we go through marriage or that, and relationship situations that breaks our hearts, is that, is that, is that, is that we still have a Christ who's our companion. We still have a Christ, I don't believe y'all hearing me, who provides consolation and hope. When, when we going through our brokenness or financial stress, is that God still, through His Son Jesus, provides us some resolutions. He gives us strength. He provides us what? Physical, emotional, and spiritually healing when we going through season of, of sickness. Cause the word of God said, "There, there, there is nothing that you and I cannot handle that Christ did not handle before. He bore our infirmities." So, 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 so if there, if there is an addiction, is that Christ knows how to provide what? Power for us to overcome it. And let me say by way of conclusion, is, is that, is that, is that, is that, is that there is nothing that you and I will encounter that Christ does not know about. That He, He's not aware, that He is not able to help us. He's know how to bring about healing in our lives beyond the imagination or what man or what human can even think of. He's the one, whether he has to go by using man, is that He's the one that oversees. He's the one that controls the things in our lives, okay? So, that, 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 that's a assignment, that's a work assignment that you and I has to make sure that we check daily. Okay? If, 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 if we gonna deal with this brokenness, uh, uh, we know, keep that in our mind, knowing that Christ is with us, that He, 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 He's, He's there before we do anything stupid, anything that we gonna regret, and that we need to check ourselves on a regular basis to make sure we, we don't allow brokenness. We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't wanna get it and get, get at a point in our Christian, on our Christian journey that we are like the children of Israel, that our spirit becomes so brokenness that we lose our pep, we lose our praise. We, we lose our enthusiasm, we lose our reason for existence. Cause if you remember, Israel a- asked the question when the Babylonian wanted them to sing a song of Zion. They turn around and ask the question, "How can we sing a song?" Yes, they was, they, they, they couldn't sing because they was, they was broken. So the assignment that I want us to do from this day forward, on a regular basis, is to check ourselves. See if we still are able to praise God, to give Him the glory, to give Him the thanksgiving, to give Him the adoration that is due to Him even when we going through some things. Why, why you asking me to check myself, Pastor? I'm glad you asking, and I'm gonna leave you alone. The reason you and I need to check ourselves, why it's so important for us to do it regularly, is that we don't want to get to, uh, uh, a state that we start having depression. We start allowing the things of this world to overwhelm us that would lead to brokenness. So we have to keep a grip on the things that is most important to God. And that is, in spite of it all, we got to give Him the glory, got to give Him the praise. We got to lift up our holy hands. We got to shout. We can't lose our pep. We can't lose our zeal. Okay? So I just want us to think on that and praise God for Jesus. Cause He know how, even when, even when we do have to deal with a broken heart, broken spirit, is that He know how to heal. God bless you, God keep you, Isaiah, for let us pray. God, our Father, we thank you for your word. We thank you for reminding us that there's no brokenness that we can, that we will encounter, that if we look to you, ask you, that you will heal us. Thank you for being that for us. Thank you for caring for us, even when we didn't understand, even when we was perplexed, even when we was troubled about the cares of this world. And, but God, we thank you that you is the author and the finisher of our faith, that you was there. You kept us from hitting rock bottom. Thank you for not allowing us to lose our mind. Thank you for not allowing us to go crazy. We bless you now. Ask dear God that you was just comfort, that you was just strengthening those who are listening, those who are watching. Let them know dear God, and remind them in your word that you have not given us the spirit of fear, but you have given us the spirit of power. but you have given us the spirit of power, sign mind. God, we ask you keep our mind, keep us in our right mind. Bless us now, and we'll bless you back. We'll tell the world what a great God you are. We ask all these blessings in your Son Jesus' name. Amen and amen.